The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you've signed up. Everything's done. Omar has signed up. The minutes have all been signed. Omar, did you sign the minutes?
No, I was with clients who were working on legal matters all day today, Chairman, I'm sorry. I, I, and I just barely saw the email from the administration assistant not more than two minutes ago. But, and I was going to attend the meeting, but my cardiac medical team put me on a new medicine today and they suggested that I not leave the house.
Okay, that's fine. I hope you're feeling better. I do. So, can you, can you hear everything okay?
So far, you just hit the pledge of allegiance.
Yes, yes. I just wanted to make sure you could hear. Okay, sewage disposal for Stan. Intent to cut Pasco, Greenwoodlands and King. Are you here for that at all?
Nope.
Nope. Okay. Request for payment for the capital reserve.
That was all for the.
Both of them, so I signed. Okay, I'm just making sure.
It was for the balance of the York rate, the broom York rate coming out of the.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Let's see, over the last week, it's been, uh, last two weeks, since it's been two weeks between the meetings, there's been a number of things that have come up and I just want to bring it to everybody's attention. With the COVID virus that's presently going on, Steve Welch talked with me about voting in the fall. And I think personally, I just think it's, we're gonna be back to normal by then. But he's developing contingency plans with the people that are in charge of voting. And we have an older voting staff. And one of the options was to do it outside in, in November in New Hampshire. And I, I just feel that the older ladies and older men that are helping out don't need to be outside for 12 straight hours. So I want to just try and get that inside as much as possible. But they're, they're developing a plan and we'll follow it accordingly. There's been.
Who's, who's developing the plan, Mr. Chairman, please?
Steve Welch. He has a whole committee.
Oh, okay, correct.
He's the town moderator.
That's fine.
Okay.
I didn't hear the name. That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, there's been issues of trash at Page's swimming hole. The younger kids have volunteered to pick up the trash and, and clean it up. And I just think, you know, it's been a long, it's been an ongoing problem down at Pages. One of the problems is it's private property. It's not town property. It's under the park committee. Paul Manson brought up a good idea is if the town got some trash barrels and put some wires in the barrels and, and the town could come by maybe twice a week and empty that. There've been complaints from some people in town that it's private property and they don't want to do that. So I'm opening that up for discussion here if anybody has any better ideas. Chief.
We, we had the same problem two years ago. And I had asked the select board back then if they would be willing to have the highway department put trash barrels down there and they took them out twice a week like they did. And that significantly helped with the problem. Now, they didn't do it down at Pages on their property per se, but where they did do it was down at, you've got Hamilton Field.
Right.
And then you've got Riverside Park.
Right.
Riverside Park is the way that the majority of people access Page's swimming hole. So wouldn't you agree that most of them would be respectful and throw them in? It's like right now they have no place to put it.
Right.
The other thing I would be concerned about, about having some of the younger people, although they did a great job and God bless them for going out and picking those things up. Right now in New Hampshire, New Hampshire's not the only state, because of this COVID-19, believe it or not, we've created a shortage with heroin and fentanyl coming into the state of New Hampshire.
Right.
But our residents of the state.
Are still using it.
Being as creative as they are, have resorted to cooking methamphetamine. The problem with cooking meth is they use also a process, let's call it a one-pot process, where they'll take a soda bottle, a plastic soda bottle, and they'll do the cooking process in the bottle while they're going down the road or while there's stops on this. This process requires what they refer to as a burping process. The bottle has to continuously be opened and closed as the bottle expands and contracts in order for the meth to process. When they're done with that, they'll dispose that lot. The problem is if somebody picks it up like a child and it continues to process, it now has the potential of exploding.
Exploding, right.
So we don't want to do that to the young people. I don't want to do it to our highway guys either, but.
Well, the younger, the younger people. It's the younger kids and the, and the town who stepped up.
Yes, they did a great job on cleaning up down there. I, I check both places on a regular basis. I have thrown beer can, beer cans and beer bottles in the back of my cruiser and taken care of them. But I do think that having trash cans down there, which we've done previously, and having the highway department go down, and I've talked to Paul about it, he always been great about it. I think that if that takes care of 60% of the problem.
Yeah.
That's 60% of us have a problem we have to deal with.
And then education and just maybe some signage. I'm exploring it right now. Paul, are you comfortable with your mission?
Yeah, I was gonna use steel 50-gallon drums, just cut the top off it and put liners on. Somebody said that they stole the cans last time. I have no problem taking a torch and cutting holes in the can and putting chains around them and chaining them to a tree. I mean, if that's what it comes down to. I can't believe that 55-gallon drums have become a commodity that people really want.
Hang on, hang on, I got different order. I just, Francis.
You mentioned all private property. There's two issues down there. One, private property belonging to Page, and then the other private property goes to the river belonging to the town in the form of the library property. That's all the way to the road.
Right.
So we have no jurisdiction on the Page property.
That's what I, yeah, that's what I presented.
And the barrels would have to be placed on our property. It would not be a bad idea if somebody got permission from the Pages to go and pick up trash and ended up on theirs too because it probably came from out of leniency and letting people swim. But we have no jurisdiction over the ones in the river. If they don't like what we do, they can walk up the river and swim anyway.
The question is not jurisdiction. The question right now is trash.
We gotta have jurisdiction before you control the trash.
I, I honestly haven't taken a, like, a close walk down. Is, is there anything posted indicating that there's really fines, you know, that people are susceptible to or anything like that if people litter? I mean, could that be something that can be done if it's not there already? In addition to the barrels?
Yeah. I think the barrels are key. I mean, at the farm, I have some big blue barrels that I grow potatoes in that I might use anymore. I've got four or five of them. They get drill holes in the bottom, you know, for drainage and stuff. So if the town wants those, I'll volunteer them up. I think Andrew, signage and education is important. And I think you've just got to set an example of, of being clean and cleaning your shit up. You're cleaning your debris up and just having it be that way. Do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I agree. I like the trash can idea and a couple of signs. And we could probably ask the Pages if they minded if we put a, a trash can there or something. They could just write something down, give us permission and we'll pick it up.
Yeah. Omar, is there any liability to trash cans that the town is picking up if it's on private land and they give us permission?
Well, if they give you written permission, I mean, there's liability all over the place. I mean, the chief gave you the primary liability with used needles, the cooking things that they talk about. There's liability all over the place. Yeah, you want to try to be nice and, you know, provide a way to pick up the trash, but. And I'm not, I can't talk as an attorney. I'm only a member of the select board. I, I just, you, you gotta be careful with fixing public duties with private property owners and just, I mean, it's just liability all over. I mean, you could surely.
Okay, well, if there's too much.
The county insurance might say, yeah, no problem. We'll, you know, we'll cover you. But I just would be very cautious.
What if, what if we just, the orange fence that now, that is down there now? Obviously, that's the boundary line or very close to it. What happens if we put one barrel on this side and one barrel just on the other side of it? One as you enter, you'd throw it away. When you exit, put it on the right-hand side. That way you're just spinning the barrel around and you're done.
Okay, we'll do that. As far as town is.
Doesn't the National Forest have a carry-in, carry-out policy that said if you carry in, you gotta carry it out? I mean, I'm not sure that we want to be in the position of, you know, providing trash. I, I don't know, you know, we don't have, I guess we don't have an ordinance, but I, I'm not sure that it's fair to the town, fair to the already overburdened highway department to actively, you know, picking up trash. I, I think people don't laugh, but I think people should be responsible enough that if they bring in a six-pack of Pepsi-Cola to drink, they ought to be bringing out six bottles. And I mean, I just, people should be careful about their environment.
If, in a nicer world, that would be good, but it's not that way. And I think signage somewhere might be appropriate. I don't know what it costs to make a sign, but dispose of your trash. If you bring it out, do like the Forest Service does, which would Omar just say?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, maybe that's something you could, someone could look into as far as the kind of signage that they do have, like, like he indicated. I don't know, maybe we can get a sign from them. I don't know.
Yes.
You know?
Would you be willing to make a, a call and check that out?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Okay, you volunteer on that?
Sure, absolutely.
Point of information. Okay. Yeah, but.
Are we allowing non-residents in and out of there?
Have to. Because it's the United States of America.
No, you don't have to.
We're talking, we're talking about a trash issue right now. Go ahead.
Thirty-five years ago, Riverside Park was the alternate dump for the town. We cleaned it up. The Boy Scouts cleaned it up. Mostly the park erected it. We tried barrels. Didn't work. Household trash went down there and we filled up two or three a week. So we stopped and it was carry-in, carry-out. So you may find that it will attract trash just having the barrels there fully.
Okay.
I just want to reiterate that three years ago when we did it, it was a, it was a success.
Okay. Well, let's, you know, you've got to look at it and Jeff.
The only, the only point I wanted to make is because the town accepted federal monies to clean that area up in 2017, at that point in time, you've opened yourself up to having anybody go in there. You're using federal tax laws for that.
And that goes with any USDA grant with a.
But that's not forever.
That's a good point, Jeff.
Yes, it is. Okay, an update on the, so the action items on the trash is barrels. Andrew's gonna research signage. Paul, are you okay with picking it up?
I, my, what I said I would do is I'd go down Friday morning. I mean, I'll even come in at 5:30. I, I'm here anyway at 5:30. I'll go down there, I'll go down there with tobacco. And if the barrels are that full, I'll put them in the back door, take them to the transfer station and dump them. I'll do it Friday morning. I'll do it Monday morning. That seems like it would be the busiest time, right?
And I'll, yes, and I'll go on to the barrels.
I just want to also say that when I was working today, Jesse Reed stopped by. He said he's not a Wentworth resident, but he grew up and he's always used Pages, that area. And he told me that if the town puts barrels down there, he will stop down there once or twice a week and check and if the barrels are full or the bags are full, he's more than willing to pick them up and take them away. He said he set a dumpster that he can dispose of them in and he said that way.
Wow.
He, he said, you know, he uses it. He has no problem trying to help out. So he said he would stop down there a couple of times a week also or every week.
Chief, I think another action item would be the kids. This is, you know, you know the kids that are doing the cleaning up. They need education on drugs and stuff. Are you willing to do that or?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, I take the opportunity to interact with them whenever I can and caution them on those things without.
Right. They, they need to, they need to not be naive on that. Okay?
I agree.
Good. Okay, we had a, everybody comfortable. Had an update on the hazard mitigation process that we're going through. We've had two meetings. And I actually think it's going well. I think for a town, we've had great participation. Most everybody here has participated in the Zoom meetings. I just sit back and listen. I'm impressed that we're coming up with some good, good ideas. The hazard mitigation thing is important because it, it has now a town plan for disasters. And the town plan is, is now going to be reviewed for priorities on what's important and what we look for priority. And attached to these priorities are budgetary, uh, things that the government can help support the town with. So we're sort of fast-tracked into a queue on doing some of the things that we want to do in this town, like a fire station, you know, dam safety, water quality and things like that. And Jeff, you're, you're taking more responsibility than anybody else in this town on this. Do you have anything to say about the hazard mitigation process?
This is the second time that we've done a hazard mitigation update. We have to do that every five years. It opens up, as you said, all these things that we are discussing. It also opens up the chances for you to receive grant monies.
Right.
And that's the big one. Without that in place, if you have a flooding where you've lost X amount of road, your chances of getting that grant monies without that hazard mitigation plan being in place are slim to none.
Right.
So if you look on the town's website under, I don't remember now exactly if it's on emergency services or whatever, you'll see the first plan that was adopted in, I think, 2015. And that was put on site. It's very similar to what you were going through and looking at the past few meetings. But I think it's going very well. When we go to update the emergency operations plan, that's going to be a long one. That'll be, you know, close to eight months' worth of nights and maybe a week and a two.
Yeah, there's a lot of things the town needs to do with communication and stuff that we could improve. But the nice thing to report to the town is we're, we're on track.
Yes.
To do some good things. Jordan brought up a great idea just before the meeting with regard to the hazard mitigation. I think it's appropriate to look for volunteers for a grant committee ahead of time. Anybody in town, I know this is on YouTube, but anybody in town who has knowledge of writing grants, who could come and support of endeavors for, say, a water system at the school, a new fire station, bridge reconstruction. And if they, if somebody has knowledge of that and wants to volunteer on a committee to help write these grants, the entire select board would be appreciative of that. Anything else you heard at that meeting?
Yeah, no, I just think maybe we should just advertise a little bit and see if we can get a group of people that know about these grants. I've never done anything like that. I don't know anything about it, but there's people up there that have. It's good to have a small committee that from time to time, as these things come up, we could look through that plan and figure out which ones first and start going through them.
Well, I've had five FEMA and USDA grants over the years and it is a process to doing it. And once you understand the process, it goes very smooth.
It's very time-consuming.
Oh, it is, it is, but, you know, they'll help you. They'll work with you.
Yeah.
And, and it's just a matter of, Andrew.
I've just, just adding to that, I, I mean, I love the idea of something like that happening. I mean, myself, I started looking into some USDA grants related to rural internet service like we've talked about in the past. So that's still something that's, that's something I, I want to look into a lot more. And that whole topic, I'd like to bring back up again as well, but.
And that came in the hazard mitigation meeting last week. Communication, fire department.
Okay, yeah.
Police department and the TPD.
So may, maybe we can, I don't know, use that as a, as a stepping stone. I don't know.
That's your, that's your strong suit, communication, so.
Yeah, I mean, that, that'll, that'll definitely be something. I've been talking to another resident in town. I, I won't mention her name at the moment, but she's gonna be, end up running for a seat in the State House and looking to try to push something like that along as well. So, so we'll look at that in the future.
All right, sooner, hopefully sooner.
Okay. Jordan, do you want to give an update on the bridges?
Okay.
I'm not being a pain in the ass, but.
There's not been that much to update.
Okay.
You haven't heard some DOT, right?
Yeah, I talked, um, talked to, Omar, you may want to jump in on this if you've got any better ideas on how to approach the DOT. CR Wilkie is our block.
Did you see an email from Chris Fordyare at HEB? He said he talked to CR's.
Ron Kleiner.
The next guy down, that he was gonna make it his own mission to get to it. So I've heard nothing since then, but that was this past week?
Yeah.
So something should be going on.
No, I already told you guys, CR Wilkie is a really hard guy to hold. Period, end of discussion.
I've tried for a month.
And him and the guy that underneath him, Ron Kleiner.
DOT.
Those are the only two people that can sign off on it.
Okay.
And they're very difficult people. You almost have to call them, and I hate to say this, you almost have to call daily until they answer the phone. And you'll get lucky.
Is my name, Mr. Chairman?
Omar. Go ahead, Omar.
Yeah, uh, in the old days, if we had an issue, we would go to Executive Counselor Raymond Burton and within a day, we would have some action out of these state agencies. And our friend, Executive Counselor, is Executive Counselor Michael Cryant. Every once in a while, I see that we get a notice or a series of postings from Executive Counselor Cryant. And I think, Mr. Chairman, not to put any more, not to put any more on your plate, but I would say in the first instance, go to Executive Counselor Cryant. I'm not gonna say that this is an election year and, you know, sometimes things can happen more in an election year. And then I don't think it would hurt either to go to State Senator Bob Gaiden. Uh, but again, uh, Executive Counselor Cryant is one of five people that ultimately appoint the, uh, the, uh, commissioners of each one of these state agencies. He is one of five people, and I would take the majority of the executive council, so, that then puts him potentially as one of three.
Do you know him?
That's my comment.
Do you, do you know him personally?
Uh, yes, I do, Mr. Chairman.
Would you be willing to call him?
I've been assigned for two years as county commissioner.
Would you, would, since you do know him, would you be willing to call him? Cause I don't know him from Adam.
Uh, uh, I, to be perfectly honest with you, Mr. Chairman, I think you as the chairman of the board of selectmen, uh, and between the two of us, you would have, uh, substantially more luck than I would have with Executive Counselor Cryant.
Okay.
Substantially more.
Terrific, okay. Um, how do you spell his name?
His first name is Michael, his last name is Cryant, C as in Charlie.
Yeah.
R as in Raymond, Y as in yellow, A as in Adam, N as in Norman, F as in Sam.
Ryan.
E as in handover.
Okay, and we can get his number. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, 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 yeah, anytime, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, in the last two weeks, we also had a, a meeting, um, a Zoom meeting between the select board and, uh, the school board, uh, informationally, just to get a better feeling of who does what and how things are organized. And so, it was an educational, um, uh, affair of the, as far as the town, the town spends sixty-four cents of every do- tax dollar on education. Um, and the rest of the town is running the next thirty-six percent, uh, thirty-six cents, so, um, the town, the town school system takes a significant chunk of our budget, and, uh, it's important for us to know how to work together. Who attended that meeting?
Uh, it's in the minutes, uh.
Have we posted?
Yeah.
Um, actually, yeah, right here.
Yeah, we can hand you the minutes, they're right there.
Okay, um, Chief Trot, you report it.
Okay, so, um, I'm just gonna get it right once again, obviously, we'll continue to take part in the COVID-nineteen conference calls that are taking place weekly. Some of them two, three, four times a week depending on the calls and whether it's.
Excuse me, just, Chief Trot's giving his, uh, report.
We took a burglary report from a Wentworth resident where a Husqvarna chainsaw was stolen during the course of the burglary. That, uh, that investigation is still being looked into. Uh, we met with two Wentworth residents who had requested to speak with myself regarding a trespass notice on both of their behalfs, as well as two notice of harassment regarding a former girlfriend at one of the parties. Sounds complicated, trust me, it was. We managed to, uh, get four different, uh, notices served to this individual with the assistance of another police department in another community. We haven't had any further complaints as a result of that, which I am thankful for. We took a report of a man scorting on someone's property off of Buffalo Road in the area of the dam. Uh, I went there, I was able to locate a campsite there. Uh, I've been there, as of today, seven times between last Friday and today. Uh, there's no physical indication that that individual has returned. Uh, but there are items there, and I expect that he's probably going to return.
What vehicle?
It, it's not a vehicle, it's a bicycle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which AM on Buffalo Road?
Uh, it'll be the first one closest to East Side Road, so in the area of seventy-six.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, no problems, no worries. Uh, so, I'm still looking into that, I was, I'm confident I'll make contact with him. Uh, a couple weeks ago, we reported that there was a theft from a property on North Dorchester Road that was reported to us where a, I think it was a fifty ton or five ton chain.
Chain, like.
Yeah, chain falling and stolen, yes, and we recovered that. Um, and there will be warrants and affidavits done for the individual who was in possession of it, as well as the theft. Uh, we worked the holiday weekend, I did actually all weekend, and the holiday itself, I'm sure a lot of you may have seen me out there. I started doing some, uh, proactive motor vehicle work just because of the amount of motor vehicle traffic that we're seeing, especially during that weekend. And the OHIV trails were opened up, and there were several violations that I, that I dealt with during that time. Uh, I will say that I'm trying to minimize my motor vehicle work because I wanna minimize my interaction with people as well. Being respectful to them, but also keeping my law being into consideration. Uh, let's see, we'll continue to do whatever we can for motor vehicle patrol, those proactive motor vehicle work when we get complaints, which we have. Uh, I've met several times with the owner of the Run Town Speedway, uh, Dan. I made him aware that the track, according to the governor's new guidelines, can be opened as of last week. I've sat down, gone through those guidelines with him, and then I referred him to Chief Ames, because my part of that is just a small part.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, until the track actually opens up and, you know, then I have a little bit larger part, but the chief has, uh, several things that needs to be taken care of before the track can actually function. It's my understanding that he's taking care of that now, he just needs to come and sign it.
Yes, yeah, so permit of assembly would be the first thing on his agenda, is state permit of assembly.
Do you, do you have to have ambulances or fire trucks present?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just.
Yep.
Yes, it's per, per the, uh.
Per the ordinance.
Right, okay.
Uh, I placed in your folders a copy of the updated racetrack schedule.
Yes, okay, okay.
That schedule is, uh, not very different from the original one that was put out. But, uh, one of the differences is, is actually less races taking place, not just because of the COVID-nineteen, but he's actually eliminated some of the Sunday races that he had asked for permission to, uh, to have take part on Sundays. So, that's been alleviated. Um, he's going to be operating, uh, starting not this Saturday, but a week from this Saturday. He'll be following the governor's guidelines, and he will be adhering to the guidelines that are put in place under the Wentworth ordinance as well. Okay, so, he's, he's been very cooperative, wouldn't you say, Chief?
Yeah.
Uh, and, and I'm actually happy for him that he's able to do that. Having said that, uh, I have been asked that, uh, I submit to you a written request for him to be able to conduct an event at the track this Sunday. Last Saturday, he conducted an event, and what it was, was it was a, what was it, Chief?
It's basically practice trials, so they let a single vehicle onto the track, get some time trials, test and tune.
Oh, okay.
It's a testing single car event, and he would like to do it this Sunday between eleven and six. He knows he has to have permission from the selectmen to do that, he also knows he has to come and see the chief tomorrow to sign his, uh, the paperwork that he has.
Do we need any emergency vehicles there?
No, no, no. Uh, he has also spoken with the campground, the campground is in complete agreement with it. They're a little sympathetic over the fact that he hasn't been able to open up until this point. Obviously, financially, that's devastating to him.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, he's doing anything and everything to try to conform. Um, at one point in time, before the opening last Friday, uh, with the restrictions being lifted a little bit, he even considered just throwing up his hands and saying, okay, now the track's not running at all this year, and I'm going to Florida, I'll just take my hit. Uh, thankfully, he was able to recoup a little bit, so.
Do you, do we need to then make a motion and do a vote on that?
Uh, I believe that you would, and I have a form that you would have to sign.
Uh, with, since it's all, uh, disapproval from the chief, I would make a motion to approve the request of the racetrack to do this special, uh, single car trial on this weekend, was it Sunday? Was that the only day, Sunday, Chief?
Yes, well, he's doing an event on Saturday, but he's already scheduled for that, and it's the same event.
Yeah.
He's just wants to do one again on Sunday.
I make a motion that we approve that, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, I vote yes.
Yeah, I vote yes.
I, I vote yes.
Can I add the, uh, schedule to your minutes so that people in town will know when you schedule a vacation?
Schedule, schedule.
It's already in the minutes. Yeah, we have a copy, Francis, that I'm, that's gonna.
Yeah, but it has to be made out of minutes by the, the select board.
Okay.
The, his re- the police report has the, he just said it, the, the police report has.
He's the one that makes it up out of the minutes.
You are. You're not running a meeting, okay? He, his report goes into the minutes of every meeting automatically.
Has that been made a decision?
Okay, yes, that's a process decision.
So, uh, one of the other items that I was gonna bring up was Hamilton Field or Riverside Park, but I think we've already successfully addressed that.
Okay.
Am I correct?
Yep.
Okay, great.
I think we're getting some action, we got three action items, and everybody's got responsibility, we gotta get back to them.
And the last thing I wanna bring up is tomorrow, uh, myself with a Wentworth cruiser and Deputy Pete Carricetti, and I agree with the fire department as well, will be taking part in the graduation of the school, and will be escorting the graduates around the community for them to be recognized, obviously, social distancing.
Yeah.
Uh, being in place, but there's a route that's being put out to the parents, uh, it's on social media, but I just wanted the board to know that that's what we're doing.
Okay.
And, uh, I wanna publicly congratulate our graduates, considering everything that they've had to endure during the school year, they, they deserve credit for that.
And it's nice of you to do that, both of you.
Where were they gonna be parading?
The route is on, is on the website, I'm not sure exactly, I know it's gonna get down Route twenty-five. I think it may even go across Gold's Lane.
The turner road, Route twenty-five from the school to turner road, turner road to Gold's Lane, back out to twenty-five, and then back to the school.
Perfect.
Did I say there's only four graduating and three graduating?
Correct.
Holy, yeah.
That's it for me, sir.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Yes.
Um, Chief Ames?
So, our call volume over the Memorial Weekend certainly increased. Uh, we ended up with two motor vehicle accidents that weekend. Basically, it was one of the same for both of those calls. It was the same motorcycle, it was the same accident scene, we just have to tally it as something. So, what happened is another passerby saw the bike off the side of the road after all emergency personnel had left, and called it in again.
Okay.
So, it hadn't been toned at that point.
Okay.
Uh, we no sooner got back from that, and we were toned out for a structure fire and warrant. Uh, we had two, we had three, all three trucks, uh, working the scene. Uh, water source and then two pieces on the scene, we had, uh, twelve, I believe it was, firefighters on that scene. Uh, we were able to lock the fire down, uh, there really isn't much of a building there, but, again, we knocked it down and worked it from there. Uh, we didn't get back from that, we, that came in about nine-thirty, we got back about three, and at three-thirty, we were finishing up rolling hose to ready the trucks for the next type of call. Um, then we had outside fire, we were told to for the town warrant again. And then, after that, we had a odor of propane in a house here in Wentworth. And then, just the other night, we had a motor vehicle accident and a warrant, uh, that responded to. The motor vehicle accidents, that we, we're automatic for warrant on those, we're automatic for warrant on the bulk of calls. And, and the motor vehicle accidents really is a big one, because we carry the rescue tools on our trucks for those. It, it was kind of a contractual thing years back, uh, that we would respond.
So, Warren doesn't have those?
They do not have what is needed, let's put it that way.
Okay.
And that's it for me, uh, other than the plant sale was great?
Yeah, that's good, definitely, that's good.
From what I've been told, the Wentworth, uh, volunteer fire department is doing above and beyond the call of duty as far as its mutual aid services concerned.
That's good. Um, Paul, GP Elliott?
The highway department has been very busy the last couple weeks, we, uh, we have been ditching and grading. Uh, we've done Buffalo Road, Zo Road, Augusta Road, um, Mose and Turner Road. Um, today, we finished, uh, Nichols Hill, ditched and graded. Uh, we've applied magnesium to roads that people have called and requested, uh, several people have called and requested. And that's been our two weeks. Uh, tomorrow, and Thursday, we're gonna be up on Red Oak Hill, we're gonna be ditching the roadways. Uh, I think I gave you guys an email last weekend, on weekends, I got a call. Looks like the twenties, the week of Monday, the twenty-second, is when they're tentatively scheduled to start grinding, um, roadways. Uh, paving that week too, they'll, they'll.
Have all the culverts been taken care of?
We are going to restart replacing the culverts, um, hopefully Thursday. Um, I actually need to have a non-public meeting with you guys after this meeting, very quickly.
Okay.
But, uh, everything's going good, all the culverts will be changed by then, though.
Okay. Okay, um, next, old business Palmer?
Yes, about six weeks ago, we had a meeting here with you.
Right.
We discussed the spraying of roads on Beach Hill Road, and the Albows were here, and many of the people in this road were here.
Right.
And we requested no spraying on Beach Hill Road as it touches my property. The road agent agreed not to spray it, it still has been sprayed. That water ends up in the aquifer, it's part of my domestic water, it's part of my paddles' domestic water, it's part of the irrigation water for the trees. We requested no spraying, they still did the spraying.
Okay, um, yeah, the agreement at that meeting, and it was a vote, and we can look back at the meeting, is that, uh, the magnesium chloride had to be at the request of people, of the landowners. Uh, Paul?
Um, Palmer, we have not sprayed past eighty Beach Hill Road, absolutely not, the end of the guardrails on the left-hand side. Um, Jamie Han- uh, Hannan called me the day after we sprayed, uh, up near his house. He called and requested that I spray a couple hundred feet past his house, and that's what I sprayed, other than that, the road has not been sprayed with magnesium chloride past eighty Beach Hill Road.
Excuse me, why did, uh, why did he request it after you had already been?
Cause he has two kids that have asthma, and the dust was killing his kids. But I have not sprayed past eighty Beach Hill Road, that is where I stopped. It's nowhere even close to Palmer's Nursery.
The road has been sprayed.
It has not been sprayed, I did not spray it.
Both were had it.
It's packed because we graded it at the right time of year, and it's packed, I have not sprayed it, you can, you are more than welcome, I will have it tested, the gravel tested. And if it comes back, then I would request the people that live on the road that didn't wanna pay for the testing, because I have not sprayed it, and I would not spray it if they asked it not to be sprayed. Eighty Beach Hill Road is the last spot.
About Pond Brook.
I did not spray it, past eighty Beach Hill Road.
What about Pond Brook?
I have not sprayed Pond Brook.
I'm sure it has been sprayed.
I have not sprayed Pond Brook. I haven't, I haven't had enough, I haven't had enough magnesium, I've had forty-three hundred gallons, that's it.
There's not much of the magnesium chloride.
Zo and Augusta Road I put it on, I put it on Kate Moonshine Road, I've put it on Cross Road, and I've put it on Turner Road from the horse farm up through. That is the only places that have got magnesium, at, as requested by the landowners.
Land, the landowners are, are emailing me to ask?
No, they're emailing me to request not spraying.
Okay, that's, I'm just making sure.
So, there are only about a half dozen or so.
Four, five?
Four or five, yeah.
Okay.
Um, that actually emailed me and said, I do not want spray.
And Paul, you're aware of those?
Uh, she forwards them to me, I have a list.
Okay, I'm just making sure we're all on the same wavelength, okay. Um, Palmer, I can just go by what people tell me?
I'd like to be your common work habit, you can see where it's been sprayed.
Okay, do you want, do you?
And I also wanna point out, the hill part of Beach Hill Road has not been properly graded since Bobby casted it.
Okay.
There's a difference between leveling and grading. Grading means the water goes off the edges, and you don't deal, our road is, the hill has been graded flat.
So, I have it in my plans this summer, I'm not gonna, I can't, I cannot crown that road, there's not enough material. And I am gonna add material to that hill and grade it this summer, it's in my plans. I, there's just not enough material in that road to, to.
To grade it, okay.
You can grade it, but you can't crown it, there's not enough material to crown it.
Okay. Um, so it sounds, it sounds like he's gonna come and, and crown it and grade it in the future.
The, the reason it's not being crowned is because they keep pushing it off to the side, making the road wider. That's the problem, the grading is. That's the problem, the grading has widened the road. That was, that was a one-lane road when I worked, when I moved here thirty-five years ago. It's, it shouldn't be a one rate, uh, one route, one-lane road.
It should.
No, it should not be a one-lane, should be two-lane road. It's, it should be widened the way it is, but they keep pushing that gravel off to the side, widening it more every time they go over it.
Well, it sounds like he's gonna a- address that in, in his summer schedule.
I, I don't know what's happened in the past, but it's not since Bobby Cass has that road had a crown on it.
Okay. Jordan, do you want to say?
I would say it's, it's gonna get to it this summer, roads tend to widen out over time anyways, so you want it, it needs to be a two-lane road, not a one-lane road. So he's not gonna pull it back and then, and then crown it with that, make it narrow, so we'll keep it where it's wide, he can put some material down the middle and then we crown it.
I understand.
Your, the, your, that road is not laid out.
It's not laid out? It's a glassified town road.
Oh, yes, by, by, uh, the fact it's been used in sixty-eight.
Sounds good enough for me.
Okay. Uh, so the action items on that are addressed to Paul as, as far as crowning it in the in the, as, in the summer work schedule. As far as the magnesium chloride, which is essentially epsom salt, I know people don't want it, but it doesn't, and you think it's been sprayed. Do you wanna have it soil tested or?
No, but I would, I'd like you to come out and you to come out, look at it, you can see where it's been sprayed.
Okay. I'll come and look, but.
I'll drive through tomorrow.
What, what's the, what's the evidence that it was sprayed, I mean, it could've been sprayed with water, somebody could've sprayed with water. I mean, do you have video, is video evidence or something?
What?
I, I feel like this is just really an attack on the, the road agent.
No, it's an attack, we asked that it not be sprayed and it's been sprayed.
He's already indicated that it hasn't though.
Then why don't you come with the select word and I'll point it out to you too?
Okay, I'll take a ride though. New business, metal detecting on town property?
Do you see that?
You know what? It's a mail we pulled.
Do you want me to just bring it up?
Yeah, just summarize it, or you can bring it up.
Okay, well, somebody wants to be able to metal detect on, um, Hamilton Field and the Common. And we had three different opinions from three different selectmen. Jordan brought up a good point about he didn't really want people in Hamilton Field because if you do dig and then fill in the divots again, there's still a possibility that the ground is gonna sink. And if a child is playing baseball or something and, you know, gets off foot, he could cause injury to himself.
Sure.
And the next one is, um, there have been a lot of historical art, you know, artifacts found in the region. Uh, especially in Livermore Falls, which isn't too far from here and, and Omar brought that point up where, you know, he really doesn't want to give people permission to metal detect because that'll set, um, a precedent and people will stop wanting to go dig up the rivers and all kinds of things, so. And then you already said, hmm, it's okay if he fills in the holes, so we need to make a decision, either yes or no. We need to make a decision.
It sounds, I, um, it sounds like it's two to, you know, I, I could go either way on this, but, uh, you got two against it, so it sounds like it's gonna fail.
People may have thought there's a great guy on the Common.
Great guy?
Palmer, great guy.
Okay. It sounds, Palmer?
Yeah?
Um, the issue on metal detectors, um, on town property. It sounds like, I've listened to the arguments from, uh, Jordan and from yourself and they're both sound, um, I could go either way on this, but it, it sounds like you guys have got a good argument, I would say we probably shouldn't allow metal detectors on town property.
I would like to make a motion to that effect, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I was just curious if we could take a poll of the room and see what everybody else thinks, cause I don't really know.
I think it's, uh, you know, a good act, outdoor activity, but once you start digging holes, you, you, just picture it, somebody on the Common out there digging holes, that's not gonna go over very good. You know.
But people in the Common have gone chap.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, I think it's a very valuable, uh, opportunity to go spend your time, but maybe just not at the spots, you know, that they want.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I had one other, uh, I had one other reason for not digging in the Common and I actually heard it from two different sources over the last two years. That, uh, I have been told that the Common now used to be the town cemetery.
Yeah, that's.
And, uh, when, uh, the town supposedly moved the cemetery, not all of the remains of people's loved ones, uh, were removed from what is still the now, now the town common. So, I, again, I, I just wanna just re- re- reemphasize that, you know, if it's gonna be any digging, it should be under the offices of a, you know, a trained, uh, archaeologist and, and again, I would suggest that if this is something that the town wants to think about doing, we should be approaching the state archaeologists on this like they did down in Livermore Falls, down in, uh, olderness and, uh, Plymouth.
Okay, that's a sound argument, um, so there's a motion on the table, you wanna second it?
This motion wants to say no, I will second that.
What, what's your motion?
Uh, to say no, no metal detector.
No digging on the town property.
Right, I second Omar's motion.
And I vote yes.
And I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay, you understand, the vote yes means for no digging on the.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Uh, let's see, anybody trying to think? Yeah, the only other things is three things to do, we gotta do non-public, okay, uh, anything else? Any other comments?
Yeah. When is the issue that I addressed of having the video put on PB Cam gonna be made? The warrant article suggested it's gonna be on PB Cam.
It already is.
It already is?
It has been for a few weeks, for quite a few weeks actually. And the schedule is out there, uh, Penny Baker TV has posted the schedule, they posted on their Facebook as well, it's on their website, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
I'll be checking.
Good. Okay, um, make a motion, uh, that we go into non-public, we're gonna discuss, uh, three non-public issues and then we're gonna close the meeting.
Can you address in general the three non-publics? As into the RSA? Yes, you can, you have to in fact. What RSA?
You gotta read this, RSA.
Correct.
Uh, non-public sessions are requested pursuant of RSA ninety-one dash A, colon, three, two, semicolon, C, matters which have discussed in public would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the board. Unless such person requests an open meeting, this exemption shall extend to include any application for assistance, a tax abatement, a waiver of fees, fine, or the levy if based on the inability to pay or poverty of the applicant.
That's fine, all three the same?
All three the same.
Okay.
So we're gonna go into a non-public.
Last week, uh, two weeks ago, you called me.
Yeah, we have a vote, I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.